All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees for the School District of Mystery Lake on Tuesday, March the fourteenth. We have regrets this evening from Trustee Fitzpatrick, Trustee Lion Land, Trustee Olivera, and Superintendent Ms. Henderson. So I'd like to approve the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Trustee McDonald?
We have to appoint a trustee to represent the board on the Executive for the Winter Games Committee.
Okay.
Add that to the agenda.
So maybe under new business, maybe? Under Section nine, new business, we'll add the Winter Games. Okay, any other additions to the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll move the agenda as amended. All in favor of that? A seconder? Moved by Trustee McDonald, seconded by Trustee Lyjuk. All in favor? Okay, the motion is carried. Adoption of the minutes from the last meeting which was held on February the twenty-eighth. Are there any errors or omissions in those minutes?
We have to move.
What's that?
Was it more?
You, you, do you want to discuss them first, or do you want to have an error or omission? Do you want to add something, or?
I'm.
Well, well, okay, I'll move it.
Okay.
We'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, now.
Something?
Was there, um, not a discussion in respect to the indemnity by law to have an addition of the new form that the Secretary of Treasure had created? To have it as an appendix? Is this an entirely new? A, a, a new action that's going to be introduced at some point?
Was Secretary of Treasure or not?
Action item that needs to come forward through policy.
And it didn't, we have discussed it at our policy meeting, just with the, with the closure. By the time everything got rolling at work, again, the agenda was already made, so.
Okay, for sure.
So it'll come on the next one, for sure.
It's coming down the road.
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor of the minutes of February twenty-eighth, please indicate? Opposed if any, the motion is carried. Delegations, here we are, Juniper School yet again.
I'd like to call upon Ms. Mayor to please tell us what she's gonna do with us tonight.
Well, welcome and thank you for coming to Juniper School once again to hear a little bit about our school. Tonight, we do have a presentation that our student, some of our representatives from Student Council have for you. So I'll just start them off and then they will be taken over. I have some introductions on Student Council here tonight. We have Victoria Ellis, Brooke Graham, Haley Fudge, and Davis Kirkness. And the three girls are from grade eight and Davis is in grade seven. Um, we have Student Council Teacher Advisors. Mrs. Cheryl Alexander's here. Mrs. Muirhead is here. Mrs. Porthe in behind there. And also on the Advisory Council for the Student Council is Kelly Tate and myself. And Mr. Mater, whenever he can get there, is also part of that. So Juniper Student Council, we wanted to give the trustees a little bit of information about some of the things that go on at Juniper School, specifically with our Student Council, so that's what we decided to focus on this year to present. Our Juniper Student Council is made up of students from grade five to eight. It has about thirty to forty students that are currently involved in the group and it's grown over the years. We have supported an inclusive model for building leadership. There are no elected positions on our Student Council, which was a change that happened about five years ago. And we meet during the noon hour. And a lot of the goals that the Student Council does is fundraise and plan school activities that promote two main areas of our school plans, our school goals. And we promote leadership and humanitarian actions. And so the kids are going to share some of that with you tonight. Um, the school goal number, oh, and you wanted to say something there, right?
Yeah. So about that inclusive model for building leadership with the no elected positions? In grade four, I thought that you'd have to be popular in order to join, so. I, in grade five, I found out that it's nothing like that. And we could actually help people and support other companies like the Dream Factory.
And so you're more interested in joining at that point, right?
Yes.
And we, we had talked about that, and so he wanted to share that little story with you. Um, some of that was base, um, some of the school goals that our Student Council support is school goal number two, which is on building cultural proficiency practices in order to build a strong school community and learning environment and to promote social justice opportunities in and out of our school and the community. And the other goal that they focus a lot of, um, actions from is goal number four, which is to improve school climate and engagement by ten percent through a feeling of belonging in our school community. And so I'm gonna turn it over to the students here who are going to tell you what their role is and some of the things that they do on Student Council.
Our role. Student Council helps promote school activities, organize student events, engage in social, also, school events, and fundraise to promote groups or organizations of interest. Get opportunities to lead and organize events. Do presentations to our parent council or at teacher-staff meetings and partner together to achieve goals. Recognizing that we can make social change and sharing that vision with others.
We are committed to building a strong school community. One student, one group, one event at a time. We have done many activities and events that, that we are going to share with you.
Student Council have partnered with parent council to fundraise to purchase our mascot, Paws. The name was decided by student council.
We also participated in several of the Nickel Days parades and the community events, and also receiving the Best School Float plaque for three years.
Donations. Fund raised to help send our running club students to Winnipeg to run in the marathon. Raised funds to support the WISE program, programming in our school. Donations to homeless shelter and crisis center of clothing and books.
We provided funds to help build a school in Nicaragua. Nicaragua teacher trip, supported the five teachers from Juniper School.
We have been involved in the bullying awareness events such as whole school information war, locks, made posters, assemblies, guest speakers, positive post-its for students in the school, and the random acts of kindness change.
We have also had many Pink Day assemblies.
We Day Conference in Winnipeg. The Student Council representatives were instrumental in getting Juniper School registered as a WE school. This was initiated by me, Haley, and Victoria. Juniper is now an official WE Day school as of September twenty sixteen and have set goals for the school year.
WE Day write-up. These were our thoughts on WE Day. WE Day is a free special event held once a year to celebrate and encourage youth empowerment, volunteering and helping to create social change. There were a lot of great inspirational speakers at this event, including Paula Abdul, Chris Hadfield, Julie Black, Tyler Shaw, and Kyle Novas. The stories inspired us to follow our dreams, know what we believe in, and help make a positive change in the world. WE Day has inspired our school and Student Council members to help our community and other people in the world. Some of the actions we will take this year are providing a family with a goat, buying a thousand lunches, both are global projects. Collecting warm items, socks, hats, mitts for the homeless shelter, and pledging a day of silence to show that a lot of young people's voices around the world are not heard.
We want to show our school and community through silence what it's like not to be heard. We wanted to go to WE Day again this year because it was a great experience and it made us want to change the world. We knew that youth can make a difference, but WE Day proved to us that if you set your mind to something, it can actually happen and we can make a difference. We hope next year when we are gone to high school that more students from Juniper will feel as passionate to help change the world as we did.
Food collections several times in the year to support the Salvation Army.
We have done a We Scare Hunger campaign. Several, several boxes of non-perishable food items were collected in October for the We Scare Hunger campaign that was donated to the Salvation Army.
We also held a sock and winter gear drive for the homeless shelter. This is Ms. Porthe's class with scarves to donate.
Student Council connect with other clubs in our school to support them with some of their efforts. Knitting Club made scarves that were donated.
We plan and organize the yearly Halloween Fun Fair.
This is what we do in the Fun Fair. All game ideas come from Student Council representatives. Such as us. We set up all the stations, supervise the Fun Fair, supporting the teachers at each station. And Student Council loves seeing the kids enjoying themselves and love this event over the classroom parties. Encourage and, we encourage and promote the community and families to join us on this afternoon. And seek donations such as cakes where the cake walks.
Halloween Fun Fair. We work the various stations running the events or selling tickets and we help clean the school at the end of the day.
We do face painting, gym activities.
We plan Spirit Weeks to promote school spirit. Held two to three times in a school year. Days such as School Colors Day, Hat Day, Read My T-Shirt Day, Crazy Hair Day, and Comfy Day, to name a few. We organize and plan school dances and talent shows.
We have held a I Love to Read Month this year. Student Council helped organize this year's I Love to Read Month in February, taking on a caliphobe. Some great classroom competitions happen from this, such as the best moo contest.
Meeting friends. We also participated in this year's Winter Fest.
Student Council focuses to support at least one area in each of these. School-based, community-based, and globally-based organizations on a yearly basis.
Local examples: Humane Society, Homeless Shelter, Crisis Center, Supported School Running Team to Get to Winnipeg, Relay for Life Team, Breakfast and Snack Program at the school, and the WISE Presentations.
We are also supporting the Teacher Relay for Life Team.
We also participated in the Relay for Life Assembly, helping raise funds for the Cancer Society.
Projects set to come this year. Dream Factory Winnipeg. Helping raise funds for kids with life-threatening illnesses to help make kids' dreams come true. A past student and family from Juniper School have been a recipient of such efforts.
Currently helping Jordan's dream. Jordan, an eight-year-old girl, recently passed and had the dream to have a playground built at her school in Norway House. This year, Juniper is holding a Dance and Hat Day support to support this cause.
These are some of the global projects we have accomplished. Nessprout malaria supplies for children, baby and prenatal care, healthcare. Seeds for families, goose supplies for schools, eels washing for our school, uh, the female hygiene project.
We've also provided funds for baseball gloves for this baseball team in Mexico.
This year's WE school focus is: Purchase a goat for a family, buy a thousand lunches, purchase healthcare for five women and newborn babies, and a big future dream is to raise funds to build a welfare community.
And at our school, finally purchase and put a buddy bench on our playground.
And from time to time, we have parties after school to celebrate our hard work and have fun.
And as you can see, they keep us very busy as staff with all their ideas. And so those are some of the things that they come up to us in terms of promoting the things that they want to see in our school. So we do our best as staff to try and fulfill their dreams and work with them to do the things that they want to do. So with that, I want to just give a special thank you to the Student Council and the Student Council teachers for supporting the ideas that the students bring forth. Um, and a special thank you to the teachers of Juniper School that contribute and dedicate, uh, their ideas to supporting the, the ideas that the kids bring forth. So with that, that concludes our presentation. And if you have any questions for them, they'd be more than happy to answer, I think.
How do you find time in a day?
We do it at lunch, Stephen said, and we have that.
That's when the meetings are, but a lot of the activities happen outside of school and on weekends sometimes as well.
I'm, I'm really excited about what you said about the inclusive model, where there's no elected positions and there's thirty to forty participants. That's just, that's amazing. And I think part of it is that inclusive model when people come and everyone is welcome to participate, everyone is welcome to join. That's just phenomenal, phenomenal. And I just like, really kudos to you guys for embracing a new way of thinking, et cetera. You know, it's like a little bit different from what people do generally. I also.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. You'll find your internal leadership will rise before part of that group.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
The group that's all here really, like, I have, um, and I wasn't lucky enough to teach David, Davis, but I taught the, the girls. And like, since grade five, all of them have stepped up consistently, right, from the moment they joined. And so that, they should, they demonstrated their commitment, right, at the beginning. And now we're here at thirty-seven minutes.
And when I asked at our last meeting, do I have anybody that would possibly be interested in presenting about what you guys do to Student Council to our trustees, and these four raised their hand. I didn't have to coast anyone, convince them, bribe them. They very willingly volunteered. So I'm happy to, to be able to showcase some of the things that our kids, and these kids in particular, are doing as leaders in our school.
I wondered too, if you had, um, measured, um, if you have measured the, you want to, goal number four says you want to increase, increase engagement by ten percent. So I wondered if at the beginning of the year, or at last year, or a few years ago, if you saw less numbers and with your inclusive model, are you seeing more numbers participating in your, in your group, in your school leadership group?
Definitely.
Gone from small to large.
Yeah.
Sometimes we don't have enough room in our library to fit all the kids. And I guess five years ago, our Student Council, that was probably why the change of the model, uh, was proposed. And I had proposed that to the group of teachers that ran Student Council, was because we had about seven, eight kids, maybe. And, uh, that was kind of an idea that we brought forth in terms of is that part of, you know, not feeling that they could contribute or being part of it. So slowly it grew and now, five years later, we've got a, well, three years ago, we already had a good-sized group. And it has steadily grown and, and kids feel like they can participate. And it's a come and go. Um, they don't have to be committed. Sometimes they can come, sometimes they don't, which has helped because sometimes we, um, divide some of the activities and we need, you know, this group to do this and this group to do that. And because of the numbers of teacher advisors that we have, we're in a position to be able to do that easily as well. So that's helped, um, facilitate the various events as well.
Uh, one more question, sorry. What would give you the idea, where did you get the thought of buying baseball gloves for kids in Mexico? Do you remember how that idea came to fruition? Remember?
Can you remember?
One of our teachers came to us and she had a friend who I believe lived down there.
Yeah, was teaching down there.
And they had a connection and just says, there, anyway, you would know of somebody who might be interested. And all you have to do is come to these kids and give them an idea and they're off and running. And it was amazing that they helped all over the world, globally, community, right?
That is so cool. I have a real, I was very fortunate one year and I got to live in Mexico for a while and we played soccer. My girls played soccer with this organized, you know, this organized soccer team. And there was, there was like the ones who went to the schools and they were very well outfitted, but we played on the fields with the other kids and they had no shoes. They had no soccer shoes. Those kids could play soccer like you wouldn't believe. I can't, like, they kicked my kids, right? Like, they were amazing, but no shoes and just shorts and they were just there for the thrill of it, but that's, you know, in Mexico and some places, they don't have it here, but, you know. The stuff that we take for granted here, so I thought that was just a really cool kind of thing to do.
Okay, any further questions?
I just want the goat, that's the only thing I want. I want to be the family with goat.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Student Council. Okay, uh, moving right along. Business from previous board meeting, let me have a look. I don't think we do. Nope, doesn't look like it. Okay, Superintendent of Human Resources. Oh, hang on, I'll just give them a minute, I'll jump.
I provided everybody with a written report. Um, again, I've posted some positions, I've awarded some positions. I've been in attendance at some district as well as community events. There's one that I would like to highlight, and Ms. Pegasus just left. But I had the opportunity, uh, the third of March, to come to the Juniper School Science Fair and participate as a judge. And I had the little ones, which was awesome. Real, real awesome.
Yeah.
Um, I have some retirements and resignations. I have two resignations. Alex Burton has submitted his letter of resignation effective June thirtieth of seventeen. Mr. Burton has been employed with the district since two thousand and fourteen as a phys ed teacher at Artie Parker, I know I was spelling your. Uh, as well as Blair Fortune has submitted his letter of resignation effective June thirtieth. Mr. Fortune has been employed with the district since, uh, two thousand and fourteen. He too was a phys ed teacher at Artie Parker. I want to just thank these two gentlemen. Their resignation is not officially, um, they don't have to officially submit it before the thirtieth of April. With the, with them submitting their resignation early, it gave us an opportunity to get a jumpstart on hiring them. These two positions have been fulfilled already, so. Um, and retirements. Doreen Claire has submitted her letter of retirement effective June thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen. Ms. Claire has been an employee of the district since nineteen seventy-six. Mr. Wamboldt wanted me to let her know that that was the year he was born, so I'm sure she's very pleased to hear that. Over her forty-one-year career, she's had the opportunity to work in five of six of our elementary schools. And for the last five years, she's been teaching grade six at Deerwood. And I know that probably part of the public is thinking, Doreen Claire, who would that be? I mean, for those of us who went to school here, uh, she would have been known then as Mrs. Bryson, so I think people are probably very familiar with it. Uh, on behalf of the School District of Mystery Lake, I just really want to thank her for her forty-one years of service to the district. And we wish her nothing but good health and happiness in her retirement.
Awesome.
Yeah. Um, and I believe that's everything I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, Superintendent of Educational Services and Programming, it's Not here this evening. Okay, Secretary Treasure's report. It's Not.
We have, uh, our expenditures for February two thousand and seventeen. Accounts payable in the amount of one million, four hundred, four thousand, ten dollars, thirty-one cents have been put through. Teacher payroll amounted to two million, forty-seven thousand, thirty-six dollars, eighty-three cents. And our support staff payroll was processed for six hundred, thirty-three thousand dollars. Five, six hundred, thirty-three thousand, tripped on it tonight, five hundred, fifty dollars, forty-six cents. I'm seeking, uh, approval at this time for the February two thousand and seventeen expenditures in a total amount of four million, eighty-four thousand, five hundred, ninety-seven dollars, sixty cents. Be approved.
Okay, a motion to Trustee Tucker, seconder, Trustee McDonald, all in favor? Opposed if any, the motion is carried.
Generally, you know your numbers there. Ms. Not.
Okay, under new business, uh, Manitoba Winter Games, Trustee McDonald, you might say something about that? About the, uh, vacancy on the board there?
Yeah, the Executive Committee for the Winter Games has a space for the school district. And we should appoint someone to it that's gonna be basically sitting in that position for the next year.
Okay. Uh, would you like to make a motion about that, please?
I don't know that we need a motion. We just have to, do we need a motion for it?
Uh, I think so.
Okay.
You may need a volunteer.
Cause I did talk it over with the Executive Committee and they don't care if we pass a motion or not, just as long as we provide a body.
Yeah, I think we better for our minutes.
So then I'll move that we appoint somebody to that position.
Okay, anybody in particular?
I think I want a seconder first.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll volunteer the chair.
Okay, um.
I'll second that.
Okay, I don't mind doing that, cause I've already gone to a couple of preliminary meetings, so I kind of know what's going on there. So I don't mind being the representative of, uh, our district at that level.
I should do what other people do, nominate the people that aren't here.
Okay, so maybe you want to make that motion, Dawn, and then we'll formalize the process.
Then I move that the Board of, uh, Trustee nominate the Chair, Janet Brady, uh, to represent the board on the Executive Committee for the Thompson-Mantle Winter Games Committee.
Okay, seconder. Uh, Trustee Lyjuk, all in favor? Opposed if any, that motion is carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Correspondents, um, School Boards Association, correspondents. Do we have something? I think we do, do we? I think that's just, it's a standing item, that's what I thought, okay. We do have something from the parent councils. And I'm, don't remember what we did last year with this, with the parent councils. I remember a request from them as well. Trustee, uh, Secretary Treasure or not, looks like they have, um, for, for their annual meeting, they seem to be soliciting donations and stuff. And we do have this letter here. Does anybody remember last year? I'm sure that they did this last year. Nobody's remembering, okay?
I remember, I do, I think I remember the, oh, no, I wasn't here last year.
Last year, we attended the event. Um, we also pay for the fees for the parent councils to be parts of the association.
Okay, okay.
That's where.
But they were here, right? There was an event here.
It was in an event scheduled at, I believe it was held at Artie Parker.
I'm not clear on this at all. It looks like they're, okay. I don't, if are they having it here or where are they having it? I don't have enough information here to make any kind of decision about this. Hey, can we track this down a bit more and get some more info, so that we know what we're, um.
With a timeline on it?
Yeah, then, then it's not till May, so there's a bit of time to, to get some more info. I'm just not clear as to what they're wanting us to do and where their, their location is. It, I don't think they're, it's probably in the city. Okay, they're having it at the Victoria Inn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could we circulate that?
It's in our package.
It was in the board package.
Seems to me that we've did something last year with this.
Um, where is it in the package?
Cause I went through the PDF.
Okay, I've got, just a letter here.
Just after Secretary Treasure.
Just this little letter here. Okay, we're gonna have to get more info on this before we can do anything. It seems a bit of confusion. Okay, so let's.
I think right now they're looking for monetary donations, which generally we, we don't provide monetary donations. We have donations in kind.
Yeah.
Um, we maybe have some district, uh, tote bags or that that we can provide.
We can do something like that. Okay, uh, maybe we can get a bit more info?
We can take a look at what's in our promotional material and, uh, we'll bring it forward to the next meeting.
Yeah, and then we can just have, have a bit more of a response. Okay. I certainly remember it was on, uh, last year that something that they were requesting, same thing again. Okay, we have a letter, uh, from, there's a FIPPA letter here, if you want to talk about that.
We received a letter, actually, it's from the Manitoba School Board Association. Um, there was, uh, information, uh, request generated to all school divisions in the province, uh, requesting that we support files that were distributed to each school division. Uh, requesting that the support files that were distributed to each school division um be supplied. The request came from the caucus at the Manitoba Legislature, looking for the information. Um, the wide swath of requests across the province created many divisions to contact Public School Finance with regards to the request, which then prompted uh Lynn Maven's, the Director of Public School Finance, to issue the notification that any request for information with regards to support files that were provided by Public School Finance must be supplied by the government. Yeah, it, they provided us the information. It is not our information to share. It's a confidential government document that needs to be redirected back to government. Um, when I spoke with her, I contacted her Monday morning, uh she said just the volume of requests, she felt the need to reiterate the need, uh, need for the personal information and that it is government domain. It's not school board information to share.
Okay, so we're not to do that.
She had no concerns with Mr. Lake.
Okay, so we're okay on that one. Okay, very good. Sometimes it's all the different confusion, this level of government, that level.
Well, and, and the letter circulated quoted all uh the regulations and excerpts from the Information Act, so then people were wondering
What do we do?
What happened?
Yeah.
She's, she's okay with Mr. Lake's school division.
Okay, very good. Any comments on that? Okay, very good. Committee reports. Policy Committee.
Changes to the trustee identity bylaw, um, zero one seventeen has been circulated, so we'd like to give it second reading for approval. Um, resolution, whereas section fifty-six, one to three of the Public Schools Act provides that a school board made by bylaw pay an annual and additional identity to chairperson and to each trustee and reimburse its trustees, trustees elect or employees for expenses necessary incurred while attending conventions or carrying out duties assigned. Or approved by the school board and such rates and under such conditions as a, as a school board may determine. Three readings are required for this bylaw. The first reading was given at the regular board meeting on February twenty-eighth. Our recommendation is that this be accepted as a second reading of bylaw zero one seventeen.
Okay, secondor, trustee Tucker, all in favor of that? Opposed if any, that motion is carried. Moving on again, Ms. Lychuck. Looks like it's third reading now, eh? Okay.
So, third reading for trustee identity bylaw zero one seventeen. Resolution where section fifty-six, one to three of the Public Schools Act provides that a school board made by bylaw pay an annual and additional identity to chairperson and to each trustee and reimburse its trustees. Trustees elect or employees for expenses necessarily incurred while attending conventions or carrying out duties assigned or approved by the school board and at such rates and under such conditions as a board may determine. Three readings are required for a bylaw. The first reading was given at the regular board meeting on February twenty-eighth. Second reading on March fourteenth. And the recommendation is that the trustee identity bylaw zero one seventeen be accepted for the third to, third reading.
Okay, secondor for this motion. Trustee Tucker, all in favor of the motion. Posed if any, the motion is carried. Education and Programming Committee, who is the chair?
That's okay. Next policy meeting is actually before our next board meeting and we have a number of uh resolutions to bring forward at uh the April eleventh meeting.
We did do some work at our last committee meeting.
On list, that's good. Okay, very good.
So there'll be a riveting presentation from the Policy Committee at our next.
Selling popcorn that night.
Yes, yes. So people tune in.
Education and Programming, um, trustee, um, Dawn, do you wanna say something about this?
Next meeting is scheduled for April twenty-fifth.
Okay, very good. Public Relations, Sandra is the chair of that. She's not here this evening, okay.
I'm a representative and we have not had another meeting or anything to report since our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Finance, property personnel, trustee McDonald.
Our next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-first.
Next Tuesday, that's right, okay. Okay, trustee comments. We'll start then we'll work our way this way.
Yeah, I'd just like to say safe travels to the trustees attending the Manitoba School Board Association uh annual conference this week, later this week. And uh I think Superintendent Henderson is going as well. And hope you bring the rest of us that aren't going that good information. Um, the other thing I just wanted to put a plug in, Hope Forum, um, is this week and we have Clara Hughes uh coming to present, um, speaking to Open Heart, Open Mind, which is also her book. And uh she's Bell Canada's um rep for uh mental health. And uh it's our honor to bring her to Thompson and really hope that the community comes out to see her at the Leckman Theater on Thursday night. It's free of charge and all are welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Tucker.
Um, yep, we're heading off to the um MSBA convention and so we'll have some information to bring back next week about that, week after next. Yes. Um, I just wanted to point out that I was um president of the senior varsity girls and boys basketball tournaments. Zones and it was just like fantastic, fun games. Um, and both the boys and girls from Thompson won and both of the teams will be going to provincials. And also, uh, last weekend, the junior girls won provincial gold at basketball. The junior girls basketball team won provincial gold. So that's really exciting in a first. And it's a second for Rob one, for Thompson. That's the second time junior versus varsity girls. Junior girl, the second time the junior girls have won. Goals, so we're like, we're rocking. And I just have to say, really have to say this. There's a, a community program, um, uh, it's called JRB, that's girls basketball and I teach some skills, teach the skills and and um in, in basketball from like grade three or something and it's run by volunteers who ha- who are, um, I know it's Chris Pelchat and Kristen Donovan and I don't know who else is involved, but I know it's those two. Do you know Paul? Those, I know it's those two for sure. And so for years and years, they've been doing this and now we're seeing like our, our, our girls.
Fruits of our labor.
And they're winning. Like in grade nine, they're, they're rock stars. They're, they're just doing really, really well. So that's some you know, some of our teachers who are participating at a community, um, community level and just like a, a huge commitment to those student athletes, so. I'm just very proud, very happy and really thrilled to watch that level of, of basketball, so. Exciting for me. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee McDonald.
Uh, I think I just wanted to say goodbye to Mr. Fortune and Mr. Burton. They were, they were both a lot of fun to work with.
And you're badminton, eh?
Well, just as part of, yeah, Artie Parker Athletics will miss them, I think.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna be a judge at the Science Fair at Riverside next Tuesday. So I've done a couple of those already, so they're kinda fun to see what people come up with and their wacky experiments or different types of things that they like to do. So that's coming up. So, okay, any questions from the public, uh?
I just have one comp. JV, basketball was in Eltona. Yes, okay. I just wanted to thank Eltona because of our weather. We did not, we were supposed to, those girls were supposed to leave on Wednesday. Obviously, there were some issues with the weather and couldn't get out. So Eltona, actually, they bumped everything and kind of rescheduled things so that we could participate and get all of our games and so I mean, which was excellent.
Super, yeah.
Yes.
We should send them a thank you letter or something.
They were extremely accommodating and very understanding. Were they, cause I think that our girls are highly toted, so they could have said no, cause I think we were pretty good competition.
The girls were undefeated.
Yes.
Undefeated this year, so yeah, it would have been a good idea to bump them.
Default, you're not here, bad, can't help it. Okay, any questions from the public on items on the agenda? No? Okay, thank you very much. We'll get a motion to go in camera and we'll come back in ten minutes.
I shall, so shall move.
Okay, trustee Tucker, secondor, trustee Lychuck, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Bye one ten minutes.